Good evening, everyone. My name is David Freese. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxee. I'm calling to order this February 25th, 2025, meeting of the Tongonoxee City Council. Ms. Huntington, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge is running a little bit late. Ms. McCutcheon is absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on our agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting dated February 3rd, 2025. After review, are there any questions or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three on our agenda is the consent agenda in which we review bill payments from the previous period. Are there any questions or concerns about the bill payments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four on the agenda is old business. There's nothing listed. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up to speak to the body at this time?
Mayor, we had no signups for public comment.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to new business. Item A, mural discussion with the Tongonoxee Arts Committee. Mr. Porter.
I'm Kita Kelly. I'm with the Arts Council, and this is Jennifer Feeney, and she's this year's president of the Arts Council. And this is Rachel Kelly. She's also a member of the Arts Council. And what we wanted to approach you about is we're hoping to get a grant to do a new mural in the city of Tongonoxee. Our deadline, though, is February 28th, and we were on the agenda a few weeks ago and missed it, and then it was snowy and everything, so we're kind of pushing it. But we were wanting to go through the Kansas Arts Commission Public Arts and Murals Grant. It's a grant that we've gotten before when we put the musical instruments into the Pocket Park, and we're familiar with it. It's usually, it's competitive, but we think that we could get it. And we, I gave you a memo of it, and we kind of had two different locations we were looking at. We were hoping to do it on a building that the city already owns, so that we don't have to go through all the steps of getting a private property owner to agree, sign a contract, give us an easement on the wall so that he doesn't sell it six months later and somebody paints over it and all of that. So we were hoping to do it on a city-owned building, and we had put two down that we had looked at and thought, these would be great. One is at the swimming pool, and it's the storage unit that the south, is it the south wall? Yeah, faces Gallagher Park. And it's a nice, big, I think it's about 10 foot tall by 30 foot wide. And then the other one would be right outside here on the front. There's a nice blank wall that could do something. Today, we're really leaning towards the swimming pool, and our reasons for that are that the swimming pool was actually built in 1925. A group of businessmen got together in Tongonoxee and put up the money to build it and kept it going, and it was one of the very first municipal, well, one municipal at that time. It was private, but it was for public use. It was one of the first public swimming pools in the state of Kansas, and they touted it as the best pool west of the Mississippi. So it was a really cool thing, and then years later, they realized it didn't make money, and they were having trouble keeping it going as a private enterprise, and the city stepped in and took it over. So it's, this year, 2025, is the 100th anniversary of that pool. It has been redone, updated and everything, but it's still in the same location, and it carries just a tremendous amount of history with it being one of the oldest pools in the state of Kansas. I think its only other rival is in Garden City. I think there's a pool down there that they claim to be the oldest pool. So we are really hoping to get permission to put a mural on that, and we have been working back and forth with Michael Young, and he's not quite given us the price. We haven't got all the details worked out completely, but he is very interested. And for those of you that don't know Michael Young, he's the one that did the most recent mural at the State Capitol Building, the Brown versus Board of Education. Michael was born and raised in Lansing, Kansas, so here in Leavenworth County. He moved to New York for a while. He did a lot of murals, like at the Chrysler Building, and he's very well-known, and his style is Art Deco style. And we think the pool, the concept we have, and we gave you a really rough mock-up there, but would be to show 1925 and 2025 coming together. So a woman in a 1925 swimming costume diving into the pool, and then the other side, a woman or a girl in a 2025, hopefully maybe the
Title wave.
The tidal wave, you know, the swim team, their uniform, diving into the pool, and have the background here set in 25, in 1925, and this over here set in 2025. And if you've seen pictures of the old pool, when they first built it, they put these two slides down that were like
Straight down.
death slides. I mean, they pretty much were straight down, and I think a few years later, they took those out for safety sake and put in diving boards. But if we could have that contrast of those old slides and then the new slide that we have that's state-of-the-art and all of that, so that basically this mural is not only just commemorating the community aspect of the pool, which has always been there. You've got kids every summer that are calling each other up and saying, I'll be at the pool at 1:00, will you be there? And, you know, it's a, it's a very much a community activity and has been for 100 years. And we think the fact that it's a 100-year anniversary is going to be a draw or a helping point in getting this grant. So that's what we're asking for, is permission to commission a mural on that. Now, the grant is 100% match, and so we're thinking if we can get a mural for around $10,000, we will ask for $5,000 from the Department of Commerce to match it, and we do have $5,000 in our account at this point that we can put up as the matching funds.
Also, the location at the swimming pool, you're going to get a lot of, you know, traffic seeing it more, you know, as people are coming and going from school or downtown and vice versa. So we get, you know, a little attraction for the Arts Council, letting them know that we're here, and it also, you know, will brighten the drive.
Yeah, it's a very visible site, and, you know, in June of every year, when you have every Friday, the town is packed, and people are parking here and there and everywhere to go to those swim meets every Friday morning. So you've got a lot of outsiders that are coming in at that time, too, that would see it. But you also, whenever you do any events, like Tonky Days at the Gallagher Park, it would help, I don't know, brighten up or help that space as well. You have anything to add?
I guess when we were brainstorming the mock-up of what we wanted the mural to look like, we had all agreed that Tongonoxee is really strong in the people that have been here for years and years and years, and the people that are new to town coming together to make Tongonoxee what it is, and I feel like this mural is a good representation of Tongonoxee in that way as well.
Right, and we currently have the two murals that are at the Pocket Park, and those were done by Kelly Polling, who was, he's a very well-known muralist out of Chillicothe, Missouri, and he died a few years back. So unfortunately, we will not get any
They're one of his last murals.
Yeah, so it kind of carries a, you know, that we're one of the only, I think we're only Kelly Polling murals in Kansas. Most of his are in Missouri and up in Nebraska. So, and to get a Michael Young mural, we thought would be a really nice thing, too. And if, for some reason, we can't work that out with Michael Young, there's a new young muralist in Kansas City named Alex Eikoff, and his murals are popping up all over the place.
If you go to Kansas City and you see the eyes on top of the building, that's his. If you go over near Kansas City, or near Casey Joe's, back in there, there's another mural of his with like a twisted tree.
Yeah, he's got a, it's almost like a fantastical style to it. It's kind of fantasy and whimsical, but it's really fun, too. So we're looking at those two artists. We do have a muralist here in town, Lee Kaufman, but Lee is not getting on any ladders anytime soon because she's still recovering from her last ladder fall. So we wouldn't be going with her. Now, the grant runs, the deadline to apply is February 28th. It starts June 1st, and it goes through, or is it June 30th? Yeah, July 1st, and goes through June 30th of next year. So they give you 12 months to complete the project, but our goal would be hopefully to have it completed by the end of the summer. So questions or concerns or?
Well, I appreciate you coming to discuss this. I was the one who asked that we postponed until you could be here, so I apologize for that, but thank you so much for being here.
Well, and I apologize for that. We had an emergency come up and couldn't make it that first night.
I understand. Will the, I'm sorry, Kansas Arts Commission, is that the right?
Yeah, they're a department of the Kansas Department of Commerce.
Do they have any reservations about hiring a Missouri artist to do Kansas murals?
No, but actually, no, I think they're good with artists from all over. They love to see outside art come into the state, but Michael is from Lansing. He lives in Lansing now.
Okay, great.
He's actually on the Wyandotte County side, right on that east side of K-7.
I was mistaken. I thought he was from Missouri.
Yeah, no, he's been back here in Lansing for quite a while. His whole family, Young Sign Company in Leavenworth is his family. So he, and then Alex is also, I think he's on the Kansas side, too.
And Michael Young is the one that touched up the mural on the side of First State Bank most recently.
Yeah, every few years, I think Bill New hires him to go out there and refresh it and touch it up. He was not the original artist on that.
Notes I would give on the illustration you gave us, I appreciate that also. I think, I wonder if having the 2025 date would date it, because that building's got to last us at least another 15 years or so.
Hopefully, yeah.
So just a, just a thought. Counsel, do you have anything?
The building itself, what's, any staff comments about it being on that building or really any building? Can't, I can't imagine paint would hurt the building, but.
Yeah, I think we haven't had a chance to fully vet any of this with staff. I think that building, it does house our chemical components that are involved with the pool process, and so I don't know enough about murals or adhesion of the paint and how, what impact that would have. I'd probably want to run that past the city engineer group who designed the building. I know that there's certain vents placed on that to keep airflow going, but I just, I don't know if it would have a negative impact on paint on the exterior wall there.
Is there exhaust coming out that side?
I, Dan, I don't know if you can zoom in. I know there's, I don't know if there's just one set of exhaust that comes out. I think it goes to the street side, but it looks like maybe there's one in that back corner there, too.
There's two drain pipes from the roof coming down, one on each side of that, but there's no vent on that side as far as I remember, and I have a picture of it.
They have, they pulled it up on the screen.
Yeah, there are some vents on the other side, but not there on that side.
From the picture of the mural, it almost looks like there's dormers or vents in the dormer on the roof, too.
Well, that is a overlay to make it look like a painting, so my program may have done that.
Okay.
It may not be there.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, obviously can't tell.
This design, it may not even be exactly like, I mean, we're going to kind of just tell the artist, this is our idea, and then let him run with it, so.
Yeah, on the wall, a south door vents, but there is
Kita, there's the image, the actual image right up there.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you can see.
I don't know what you even call this.
Little attic things.
When I first read the description, I wasn't, pictures of actual individual people sometimes either don't age well. I know there's one of my own dad on a mural in town, but in, it's difficult to pick the who and the when and how the images look generally of the people, and so I wasn't that enthused about the concepts of this. The overall, like, celebrating the pool and having a little bit of history and some current, and the whole concept of the Art Deco because the pool was, you know, from the 1920s. This concept I like better, but having it on a city pool, I'd hate for it to be on here and then the chemicals ruin it, or what if the pool, something happens and it's torn out? I mean, when you said that about a private business, I was like, oh, my gosh, I guess that could happen with a city building just the same in terms of, is there like a nonprofit in town? Like something that's, like, I think the thrift store has a huge wall downtown, just like the brick side of the Ratliff Drug Store, because that mural is so huge and so impressive, and that's not going anywhere. I don't think the thrift store building is going to go anywhere. They're so well-established.
We've talked to the thrift store, and they're not willing to put a mural up there at that time. Yeah, so, I mean, we kind of went back and forth with them several times.
They looked into it at one point, but I think the funds of getting the wall ready and corrupt is not something they want to do.
And then we talked to Terry Genshwater about his building, but it's not in good enough shape. He has to get in there and tuck-point it and do all of that still to get that building where you could even prime it and start a mural on it. Whereas this building's in good shape, and it is very pretty with the brown bricks, and Michael had suggested you would leave some of the brown bricks around it to give it that, I think vignette-like look to it or something, so.
Can you apply for your grant without having a location selected? Because every grant is due the next day, it seems, and that puts a lot of pressure in terms of staff checking about what's stored in there, how could that impact what is on the exterior of the building, those types of things.
It's possible, but I think it diminishes our chances of getting the grant, because they'll say that we haven't done enough footwork to know where we're putting it, what it's going to represent. And I think the biggest selling point of this mural, to get them to give us that 5,000 match, is the fact that this is 2025. It's the 100-year anniversary of the pool.
And with every mural, you run the risk of the building burning down and losing the mural, and I think everybody understands that, you know, going into it. But getting an easement and having the city own just one wall of a building, you know, kind of puts complexities into things versus us just painting on a city wall that's already owned.
So the Arts Council will take care of the maintenance over time of it?
Yeah, which is something we do need to approach you on at some other time, but the mural that's at the Pocket Park needs some maintenance, and we need to see if we can do something on it, because that's owned by the city as well. Actually, both of those are at this point, both of those walls.
That wasn't the Arts Council, but is that right?
That was the Retail Commercial Development Committee that used to exist at that Pocket Park and those murals. And we also wanted to have a bit of a community collaboration in it, and we thought if we could have like splashes at the bottom and different people could paint their own splash, it gives people a sense of, wow, I did that. I helped with that. Look, I painted that mural. We did that when we put the signs up last September downtown, and the people that came and painted a new sign and put them up, we saw them out taking their picture in front of their sign and putting it on Facebook and, you know. So I think it gives the community a sense of pride if they know that they were part of it as well.
Any further discussion?
When was that? Let me pull that, when was that due?
The 20th is when the grant is due.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue I have is property vetting it and make sure everybody has input that we get, and that the timeframe is so short. I sure understand why you want to do it now. 100-year makes sense, but just throwing it out and not having input from.
Would it be possible to do like an approval with a caveat that the building is safe to put a mural on and that it's been vetted?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure I could do that, but I guess we probably could.
Are you, Mr. Porter, Mr. Bruckovich, are you following that question?
I, sort of, if you don't mind repeating it, because we're trying to track some information here.
What was it, what was it, Chris?
Well, the concern was how short the timeframe is on the grant and everything else, and when it has to be done without proper
Right.
I don't know that hasn't been vetted or has been. This is the first time I've seen it, so then we're going to have to make a decision like now.
Yeah.
Maintenance, long-term maintenance, just can't butt in on it. Everybody else who needs to be involved.
Yes.
We're kind of stepping aside with those guys. I don't feel very good about just saying, you're going to do it because we told you to, without some input.
Yes, and I think those are all valid questions. Unfortunately, I don't know if I have a ton of answers, but one thing I might add, just based on some of the conversation I'm hearing tonight, I mean, obviously, some of the existing murals, there's, you know, an ownership value there, you know, I think anytime you do something of this nature, one of the questions is naturally the permanence of that, and what's the obligation to maintain that? And we know that we've got some failing components of that mural, but there's failing components of that building. I'm talking about the existing, the old council chambers that was also at one time the fired garage and a whole host of things. And so I think those are all things that staff should vet and give the city council some level of response on, because I don't want to be disingenuine and say, sure, we can use a city building, but I think Ms. Stevens actually said, well, we don't sometimes know the permanent nature of that. We don't anticipate the water park going anywhere, but that building is, you know, that facility is closer to 20 years old than it is five or 10, and so if there are improvements to be made, I think just adding a layer to the discussion as well, but we have this fantastic mural, and we don't want to see that go away. So, and I don't know enough about the grants to understand, you know, is there a requirement that this stays in place for a certain period of time? We just haven't vetted that with the group asking for this. And then also, in the past, what we were trying to find is, I think we had some sort of contractual agreements that the city was part of for the existing murals, and I just haven't been able to track those down to see what they may have said. So, and Kita, you might remember, I don't know, did the city pay or, I don't know.
I was on the committee at the time, and the building belonged to Dr. Stevens at that time, so there was an easement. Dr. Stevens gave an easement to the city for that wall.
For that outside, that wall?
Right, for that outside wall. So, and that, of course, with the city now owning that building, it's no longer needed, but at that time it was, because had that building sold or something and somebody had gone in there, they could have, of course, painted over it. And that's always going to be a risk and a chance that somebody's going to do that. But usually with a city-owned building, at least in my opinion, I think that risk is a little less that that's going to happen.
Okay, I don't see an action needed here. So I guess consensus is, what, are we in favor of them going forward or not? Should we take a vote?
I mean, I would be, I love the mural, but we're very fortunate that Bill New takes care of that. The community, he paid for that out of his pocket, and that, I've seen that, one of the first things I saw when I came to town 30 something years ago, and Bill's always taken care of that thing, so that's a blessing that we have that. And I like him, but I think my opinion would be, we can tell him it's okay to use it, but you may not get it, because after we vet it properly and everything goes through, it may come back that's not the best interest of the city, and there's just so much to do before we get there.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Is that clear?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So you'd be already with us going ahead and writing the grant, but we'll make sure we put in there that the city building is not yet written in stone, that it needs to be vetted. But this is our concept at least, and try to get a grant based on that.
I think that works. Does that work for everybody else?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, consensus is to go forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate your work on it.
Absolutely. Item B under new business is ordinance number 1525, allowing the consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property for a limited time and purpose for a private event at the Tongonoxee Public Library. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, this item should look familiar to the members of the city council. I should go back and find how many years they've completed this event, but since the library opened in 2020, I believe it has to be less than five years at this point. This is an ordinance drafted by the city attorney in similar fashion to previous years. The event being proposed is to occur on April 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it includes wine provided to attendees with certain controls in place as to checks of who's consuming it and who's being offered the consumption of it by the event organizers. The police chief and other city staff were given an opportunity to weigh in on this application in case there'd been issues, especially as it's a repetitive event, and they had no concerns to share with the city council or issues to present for your consideration. So staff do recommend approval. Max Wirestone with the Public Library submitted this application. He was not able to be here tonight, but he did say that he didn't anticipate there being any major changes from prior years. It's a popular event, and I think they could plan to continue it in the future, supported by the city council. Happy to take any questions, if you have any, though.
Counsel, I'm sorry, excuse me. Counsel, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1525, approving the consumption of alcohol for a private event to be held at the Tongonoxee Public Library, 217 East Fourth Street, to be held on April 10th, 2025 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C under new business is consider RFP, the request for proposal approval for Tongonoxee Water Tower Painting Project. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Paint stays on the agenda tonight, so this item, you'll remember from last summer, is a budgeted initiative in the 2025 adopted budget. This is for painting the exterior of the, after power washing, painting the exterior of the Highway 2440 water tower, which is a pedestal-style tower. We believe it was last painted in about 2015, but we're not exactly sure of the date of that. It has been quite a few years, and that tower, as you've seen if you've driven by, shows evidence of mildew and other deterioration of the painted surface on the tower. We've also adopted a new city logo last year, so we're excited that this would be the second or the first opportunity to present the new city logo on one of the water towers. on one of the water towers in our portfolio. Kind of ironically, we'll now have for our four main water towers, three different logos and one without a logo. So we've got the whole range citywide here until we get our cycle and stop changing logos. So just some interesting tidbits there. This RFP, though, for your consideration, you see it included in the packet. It's been vetted by our Public Works Superintendent and Director. And they're fully in confidence that this timeline, which is illustrated in the agenda statement as well, gives plenty of time for vendors who periodically reach out to them of interest in projects like this to submit their bids. Bids would be due in just a short time on March 10th. And we would then hopefully have a contract for your consideration with the recommended bid award as early as March 17th, if we can reach agreement with that contractor. This bid, just like the one you'll see next week for the water park painting, is not limited to the low bidder. The evaluation process looks at six different criteria, one of which is cost. And it allows the city to make a judgment call based on references and other quality of work. And we feel that's important in designing these projects, so we don't end up with a less-than-supior job out of the result. Happy to take any comments or questions or schedule questions. But again, the project's outlined there and it includes requirement to be completed by the end of September this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Porter. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion, we authorize the advertisement proposed 2025 Tongonoxi Water Tower Painting Project, more specifically to the Highway 2440 Tower. RFP as presented by staff and with adjustment proposed by the council members.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six on the agenda is the city manager agenda. Mr. Brekovich, did you have anything?
We just have the January 25 financial report, first one of the year. Mr. Porter can highlight those. Got some good early news on the sales tax numbers. So, Dan?
Thank you. So this report's included in the agenda packet for review. It shows financial results to the end of the first month of our fiscal year. Couple of things to highlight, we're still pending receipt of our final EDA grant distribution for the final closeout for that project, which was completed over a year ago. We've noted and expressed our concerns with delays in the receipt of that final payment. And you may have noticed in the national news, issues with federal dispersments of funds. We're feeling the effect of that, fortunately at the very end of a longer-term project and at a very small monetary value, but still a substantial value at over $160,000 that we're awaiting. So while we're fortunate that we're in the position where we've recouped most of our grant proceeds, we are still working hard on closing the final step in that project. One other thing to highlight, the financial report does show zero balance for the ARPA funds, but we do still maintain $395,108 in payments already encumbered and demonstrated as approved for that project, but thus shown in the financials as a zero balance for the fund because the entirety of those funds is encumbered fully with the contract approval back in 2022. With that, we also, early in the year right now, don't have any budget amendments to highlight or to show the promise to need. We do have a couple assumptions in the budget that we'll talk about a little more later in the year that didn't come to fruition. One of those being the major CMIP project with the school district to improve, collectively apply for a grant to improve turn lanes on Washington and on East Street. So that project was anticipated during our budget cycle, built into the budget because we had to publish and finalize our budget before a final decision was made by the school to withdraw from that budget initiative. So at this point, there's a little bit of a disparity in what is built into the budget assumptions and what we truly anticipate to happen this year. So we'll continue to highlight that difference as we move forward in the fiscal year. Utility and non-utility capital funds and then major general fund and city fund revenues and expenses are shown for your reference on pages two and three of the report. Sales tax is illustrated on page four. And I just want to point out, there's a slightly new format that I think is a little easier to read and follow. And it shows for the month of January only, the 2022 through 2025, year-to-date, just through that one single month receipt, total city sales and use tax, so that's city general fund, city infrastructure sales tax, total county, which is the share of the county's sales tax, and then broken out by category. So all-in sales tax, all-in use tax, and finally, total collections. And so you can see looking at those trends and the percentage changes in the top of that table. We're up on the city side, 6.5% compared to last year. Again, just a one-month period, not a real trend yet, but it's a good promising sign. We're just about even on county sales tax and we're about 4.5% up on the overall sales and use receipts. So a promising position. But when you look at the bottom half of that table in the orange cells, when you look at 12, 24, and 36-month rolling average periods that smooth out imbalances month-to-month or even in longer periods of time, we're still ahead of 36-month pace rolling average with our 12-month average, but we're not quite ahead of our 24-month pace. So again, that doesn't show exponential growth or a huge shift, but it does show relatively decent results. And this month's return obviously helped in those numbers, as you remember from last year's monthly reports. Any questions or comments on this section in particular? Okay. The rest of the report is prepared in a similar fashion to what you remember from last year. The budget initiatives for 2025 and then our 2026 budget timeline, which as a reminder, will really kick off just next month when we complete at the spring retreat some of the visioning and budget goal-setting activities and discussions that start in earnest the work towards next year. Happy to take any questions you have, but again, the remainder of the report through page 16 is in a similar fashion to what you've seen before.
All right, thanks again for the work, Mr. Porter. This is easy to read and mostly good news. Council, do you have any questions or conversation?
Yeah, I forgot to ask last month, did our ARPA spending, it was under the single audit requirement for 2024, is that right?
No, it was not.
Okay, so we'll have a single audit this year?
Well, hold on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not a big deal.
It's been... Oh, it is, no, it is. The year before was not, yeah.
Okay.
We have one in 2023.
So then we should be good.
Yep, we don't have any other federal programs.
Well, good for you. All right, good.
Good for all of us, I would say, yeah. We've stretched it over enough years that we won't reach the major program threshold of $750,000. That's right.
Right. And if anybody out there needs to know more about that, I'd be so happy to talk about single audit standards with them, so. Well, if you need to go to sleep, if you suffer from insomnia, I'm available.
Anything further, Mr. Brekovich? All right, thank you. City Attorney Agenda?
No items, Mayor.
All right. Mayor Protam Agenda?
No items this evening.
All right. City Council Agenda? Council, do you have any things to add?
One, do we have an update on the block plant at Industrial Park? And they're going to build a production facility. Is there just an update on that?
Yeah, nothing new. I actually just today reached back out to them. Late last year, I sent them a reminder that our previous ordinances that we had issued, or resolution of intent we had issued for the use of industrial revenue bonds, the statutory timeframe has expired. And so chances are, though, what they thought that project was going to cost five years ago has exponentially increased anyway and that they would need to reapply. Also, we coordinated that the state would need to update whatever incentives they might have offered. But other than running through a pre-development meeting with us, latter part of last year, they had not given us any updates or responded.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did recall something. This is just a general announcement. Our local historical society is having their annual chili dinner. I believe it's chili, right?
Chili and soup.
Yeah, chili and soup dinner this Thursday. Usually they have that at the United Methodist Church down on Fourth Street, but they're doing some remodeling. So it's going to be at the BFW from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I believe. So if you don't want to have to cook that day, then swing by and grab you some chili or soup.
Thanks for the reminder, Ms. Stevens. Sorry to interrupt there. That's it for City Council Agenda. Mayor Agenda, I would like y'all's blessing in approving Jamie Shirts to the Planning Commission. Ms. Shirts is here tonight. Would you care to speak to the body?
Sure.
All right.
Hello.
Hi. Yeah, tell us about your interest in this, if you would.
I was just perusing on the website and like I wanted to get more involved. I wanted to see what I could do. I like to stay active. I've been on committees before. I moved out here October of 2023. Nine months pregnant, so that was fun at the time. Not a good time to move. But prior to that, I've been on, I'm part of the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, on the Aerie side, handling business. But that was in Miriam. And so I don't, I don't get the opportunity to attend that much. I've been treasurer for Boy Scouts when my son was little and Cub Scouts when he was littler. He's now 19. And then I have little ones. I have a four-year-old and a one-year-old, so big, big span. But I like to stay busy, get out of the house and get involved in my community, so.
That's great. Thank you so much for being willing to serve. Hard to find good people, so I'm glad you're here. Council, do you have any questions? If consensus, do y'all approve? Everybody got a thumbs up, nod, thumbs up and a thumbs up? All right, you're on the Planning Commission. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of executive sessions. Ms. Stevens?
All righty. I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss the city manager's annual review process pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception KSA 75-4319B1. The executive session will include the city attorney and assistant city manager and, of course, council. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at 7:58.
All in favor, or is there a second for that motion? Second. Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in the executive session.
Silent?
All right, we're back in, we're back in open session. Let the record show, no binding action was taken in the executive session.
Oh, Jake has them.
Is it a, is it a motion?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to conclude the city manager annual review and award a 6.364 merit increase.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Stevens?
I move that the city council recess into executive session to, oh, for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client rate relationship. Exception KSA 75-4319B1. The executive session will include the city attorney, city manager, assistant city manager, and counsel. We will resume at 8:20.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're in executive session.
All right.
All right. No binding, let the record show that no binding action was taken in the executive session. I have nothing further under my agenda. Does anyone have anything else? Anyone?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we'll see you next week.
Six days.
All right.